Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, July the 16th, 2025, and it's nine o'clock a.m. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Krebs will lead us in prayer. Brad, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. I was going to read out of Psalms 91 today, several different verses in it. I think it's appropriate for the things that have been happening in our county lately. He who dwells in the shelter of the Most High will rest in the shadow of the Almighty. I will say of the Lord, he is my refuge and my fortress, my God in whom I trust. Because he loves me, says the Lord, I will rescue him; I will protect him, for he acknowledges my name. He will call upon me, and I will answer him. I will be with him in trouble; I will deliver him and honor him. With long life will I satisfy him and show him my salvation. Let's pray. Father, we come before you knowing you know what our situation here lately has been with all of the fires and that. We just ask for a covering, your covering of protection over us. We ask for your covering of protection over this meeting today and those words that are going to be spoken today that will be for your agenda and for the best of our community, Lord. We just thank you and ask for your blessing for today's meeting, and that we know that your presence is here. And we just say this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Does anyone here want to make a public comment? About online, someone would like to speak online, please, in your chat box? Any? Consent agenda, can you motion?
Just take a motion or make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Votes have been made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Discussion items, approval and signatures, Ochocoue Point, Phase Six plat.
Hello.
Good morning. I'm Kira Marshant with AKS Engineering, representing Polish Homes. And Phase Six of Ochocoue Point neighborhood is nearing completion, so we have a plat for signature. So I can present it to you.
Great. Yeah, bring it up. So we have to motion to sign that, do we?
Make a motion to approve Ochocoue Point, Phase Six plat?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Two copies.
Derek here. I just start going. I can listen while I sign. I don't know.
We can take care of this.
Okay.
Let's blow that chair out.
You go. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Derek Hoffbauer. I am the Outreach and Engagement Administrator for COIC. And as you know, COIC administers the Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund program. On behalf of Cook County, we coordinate the Advisory Committee meetings that meet twice a year, and then do the contract auditing, et cetera. And so this, what we're bringing to you today is the 2025-2027 Biennium Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund, which we call STIF, the project list. And we've come, we met a couple times last fall, one in a work session and one in the regular meeting to discuss these projects. The Advisory Committee met on October 23rd, approved the projects, and then moved them forward for the Commissioner review. And then the Commission reviewed those on December 18th, 2024, and approved those. So COIC worked on the application, submitted it to ODOT, made a few changes here and there. And then now is the final list of projects for the contract that would be executed between COIC and Cook County. Additionally, we have a contract for ODOT. If Ovi is online, if she's not, I can speak on behalf of ODOT for that. So basically, the funds come from ODOT to the county. So the ODOT contract makes sure that those funds are be able to pass through the county. And then the COIC agreement between the county is for then the county to pass those funds over to COIC. It's basically the same pot of money. It's just making sure that we can get the funds from ODOT to the county, and then the county to the COIC. And this is to implement a series of transit services that we've discussed in prior meetings. Total amount of the contract is $2,890,935. And there's four projects, reserve funds that are carryover funds from the previous biennium of $1,6,400, administration costs for operating the program. Then you have the operation costs, and then some capital expenditures. And we're going to be looking at, ODOT put a new bus stop over by Wild Ride Brewing. So we're going to be developing that out. We just got some new benches and infrastructure for that. And then extending Route 26 to go a little further east. So those are some of the.
What about, we talked about Juniper Canyon in the past. Are we getting any, I think, I mean, I think that's a lot more valuable than the one by.
It is, it is, yes. And we actually supported, I think it was an EPA grant. The library was going after, or for the resiliency hub. So I think they did get awarded some of those funds, and the idea is that, no.
I don't think so. And I think we had talked about doing it at the fire station because there's parking there. And I mean, I don't think we need to wait for
Okay.
a resiliency hub. I really is it too late to transfer the money? We're spending it Wild Ride. And I mean, again, getting somebody, you can always walk across town to the city.
Right.
But it sure is tough to get down from Juniper Canyon. I mean, I think that's, we've even heard of people calling in fake medical issues to get to town.
Yeah, no, that's certainly something that we can do. And like what I said, that the infrastructure, the bus pad is already there for ODOT. So it's like putting in a bench and just putting a service there. It's super
Yeah.
cheap for us to do. We can use the 50,000 to develop some better infrastructure up in Juniper Canyon. And that was why we have this capital project there is to be able to utilize that. So.
Instead of the Wild Ride one?
I mean, I think we can do both. We can do the Wild Ride for like $500. It's pretty easy. And then just extend the service there. It's not going to cost, because we already have the benches. Those are already paid for. And just putting a sign there, and we can work with Brad and the team on that. Yeah, so that's something I can elevate to Bob and make sure that we have that as a priority for this year to start to implement that service. We do offer some service via our dial ride. It does stop, but it doesn't go to the fire. It's only like one day a week, and not a lot of people utilize it. So we'd love to come out and do a little outreach, make sure people know about it, get some questions about how often they use it. And then we could tailor the service. It would probably be like a two days a week, having the dial ride. And then folks could just meet down there, and then the bus could pick us up. Doing an extensive dial ride service, I think around all of Juniper Canyon might be a little much, just with the gravel roads and the winter travel. But if we can make the fire station a stopping point. We did do some survey research a few years ago on that topic and found that people would would benefit from that. So that's certainly something that we can implement with these funds. There's a lot of money here to be able to implement that project.
Well, I think we're going to be having a meeting here pretty soon about a road from Juniper Canyon, so.
Okay, great.
Be worth coming to that.
Great, yeah, sounds good. Yeah, any questions about either of these agreements? So those funds are available, were available starting July 1st of this year. And then basically, once everything's signed, then, you know, ODOT can release the funds of the county. The county can release the funds to COIC, and we can get to work on these projects. All good?
Okay, all good.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
We should entertain a motion to pass the STIF provider agreement.
So moved. So moved.
I would entertain a motion. You want to make a motion?
So moved.
That's the motion.
Yeah. Well, you said entertain a motion.
Yeah, so I thought you'd make the motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve the COIC Transit Service using STIF funds.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Agreement. Make a motion for the other, would you make a motion for the other agreement, 35, 8, 39?
Make a motion for 38, 49.
Just question, clarification question. Is that, is that Derek, is that question, is that agreement between COIC and the state? Okay, thank you.
Make a motion for 38, 49.
35, 8, 39, all second. Motion made and seconded, approve agreement, 35, 8, 39. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye, Crawford.
Barney, aye. So move. Number seven, John Isler.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, John Isler, Community Development Director. Have before you today Order 2025-28. This is for the Replacement Planning Commission member after Shelby Duncan resigned in late April. So pursuant to Order 2022-52, the county went out and advertised for this for more than 30 days. The advertisements went out, Central Oregonian, and Primeville Roundup on our website. We had some carryover candidates from the previous application or the previous vacancy. The, we did our normal meet and greets with all the candidates, and then the Planning Commission reviewed and interviewed the candidates last week on the 9th. And their recommendation was to recommend Kirk Chivonini for the position. They think he's got the Palbee representation, and he knows agriculture, obviously, and he's done a good job with his short term as pro temp. And so that's the recommendation for Position Four. Things get a little bit more complicated with the pro temp position. So if you remember, Kirk was recently appointed as pro temp with this last round of vacancies. And so there is our county code that kind of describes the pro temp position, and there's the Order 2022-52. The kind of the thing that I was scratching my beard about is whether or not we needed to re-advertise this pro temp position. We have had advertisements out for Planning Commission vacancies, basically nonstop for the past couple of months. And so this one was advertised. The pro temp spot was advertised up through April 28th. This last round of advertisements went out May 6th and ended June 10th. I brought up the issue with the Planning Commission, brought up their options. I discussed previously with County Council on if we could go ahead and select the pro temp from the applicants that we had in front of us, or if we needed to go back out and re-advertise. And basically, with the timing of it, we both agreed with the language that we had the authority, and it was kind of up to the Planning Commission's discretion if they felt like we had good candidates in front of them, or if they wanted to go back out and put it in the paper again. They thought we had good candidates in front of them, and so they wanted to go ahead and select the pro temp so we could have our full panel. And their selection there was Frank Hook, also from Palbee. So that's reflected in the order. If you guys have any questions?
I don't.
I'm good. You guys are confident that we are in, Eric, I guess.
So the Order 22-22-52 says basically that in the event of a conflict between the order and our code provisions, then our code provisions control. And it specifically calls out our Planning Commission's code provisions for appointments. These sections on vacancies in Section 3 reads that, as used in this order, vacancy means either a currently open, available position on a county committee, or an opening that will occur in the relatively near future. And it goes on and talks about basically the need for urgency to get the new appointment as reasonably practicable after the expiration of the existing term member's term, if possible. And so then there's a question, I don't even know, is a pro temp, does that count as a committee member, or is that an alternate? And that's something that I kind of chewed on, but these are our rules. And so I don't think, personally, I don't think if we advertise it again, we'd really be getting anybody new that said, oh, I want to be this pro temp, even though it didn't apply in the previous three months when their adverts, ads were up here. And so the Planning Commission felt like they had everybody in front of them who was interested in the position, and they had qualified candidates, and they wanted to recommend Frank Hook to you guys to approve.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's our rules and we're not screwing up anything statewide, or I'm totally comfortable with it. And you believe that's accurate?
Yeah, I am unaware of how this would conflict with any existing state law. John described sort of the history of this, and you know, really, the question is, given the brief gap of time, is it necessary to advertise again? Is it prudent? Is it helpful? That was a question posed to the Planning Commissioners. The Planning Commissioners felt, no, it is not prudent, is not helpful to advertise, given the short period of time between the last round of advertisements presented to you. You gentlemen, you could disagree and say, no, advertise again. Or you could say, no, that short gap of time is not the type of thing which is conducive to the public's business.
Well, that's what I was hoping you would tell us, if it was or what.
I don't think so.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Advertisements took them out of Admin's budget, just so you're aware.
Yeah, what are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm good with it. Both of these guys are good with it.
Man, it was good, though. Everybody really liked Frank. He's in for the right reasons. He's got a good history, has a really good reputation, and seems pretty committed to it. So they're excited about it.
It's a lot of people that are good with it.
I think we had a good field, and Yeah. it wasn't just one person applied. We had multiple.
We did have a couple no-shows at the Planning Commission interviews.
Would you make a motion to approve Order 2025-28?
Make a motion to approve Order 22-25-28. Did I get that right?
2025-28.
2025-28.
All second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
So moved. Thank you. Interiors report.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't, I don't have a big report this morning. I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the county folks who were involved in responding to the the fire over this past weekend. Obviously, amazing response by multiple agencies at different levels of government. But just wanted to take a quick moment to give a shout out to emergency management, the Sheriff's Office, our Road Department, GIS, and everybody else who was involved in providing a timely response and helping us avoid losing any structures up Juniper Canyon. So just wanted to acknowledge folks here at the county who were involved in that amazing response.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I echo that. And then I had also expanded to the Fire Department, state and federal, local, state and federal, because I think, I don't know, I've been to a couple meetings about how well all three or all the groups work together. And I think that comes down to the Sheriff's Office having a great emergency management and being able to work well with others. And thank you. I don't know about this. No. Was that in Juniper Canyon? Did you lasso it?
Didn't know you were that quick on your feet.
Little rope-a-dope.
Yep, thank you for last weekend, all of you. Commissioner update? I don't have anything either. Any public comments? And here, any public comments online? Type in your chat box. We'll open it up for you. Seeing none. Well, this will close this portion of the meeting. We'll go into executive session. Thank you for everyone for showing up. The Cook County Board of Commissioners will now meet in the Executive Session under ORS 1926602E for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions in ORS 1926602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the Executive Session, except for 2D. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the Executive Session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in the Executive Session. At the end of the Executive Session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And welcome the audience back into the room.